120 West Bartlett Avenue Variation. Are the petitioners here?
Yeah.
Okay. You're gonna do this, talking to them?
Yes.
Okay, do we have the evidence of the mailings, the newspaper, and the signage? Exhibits A, B, and C?
Okay.
Soundly affirm that the evidence you're about to give is only the whole truth?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead with the presentation.
So, the first petition tonight is 120 Live. It's the property at 120 West Bartlett Avenue. It's an existing building that the petitioner plans to renovate and establish a restaurant with alcohol service, outdoor dining area, and also offer live entertainment. So, in order to do this, they are required to get three variations. The first is a reduction in the required number of parking spaces. The second is a reduction of the required open space. And lastly, an increase in the maximum wall signage square footage allowed. So, the first variation is parking. They're asking for a 94 percent reduction in the number of off-street parking spaces required. The zoning ordinance requires 46 off-street parking spaces to accommodate this use. There exists three parking spaces on the site right now, and they plan to maintain those three parking spaces. So, due to the large number of public on and off-street parking spaces in the area, there should be adequate parking. We included the downtown parking utilization map in your packet, the same one that you saw when Moore Brewing came through. And the parking spaces are listed on there what's available in the area. The second variation is the reduction in the amount of open space. The zoning ordinance currently requires a 15 percent open space on lots in the downtown area. This property currently doesn't meet that requirement. There is a little bit more open space on the property that they do plan to improve in order to do the outdoor seating area, the outdoor patio. And lastly, they're asking for an increase in the amount of allowable wall signage. The zoning ordinance allows one square foot of wall signage per one linear foot of building width. So, on the front facade, they're allowed 22 square feet of wall signage, and they are planning for about 60 square feet of wall signage. So, the variation is for the wall signage on the front facade, not the rear facade. So, as you are all aware, the downtown overlay that you guys heard recently is making its way through the process and will probably be approved by the board at the next meeting. So, if the downtown overlay were already approved, the variation for open space, for green space, wouldn't be necessary because the overlay doesn't require that kind of set aside. The parking variation would be greatly reduced. The downtown overlay would require for this use only eight parking spaces. And the sign variation would be the same because the downtown overlay doesn't speak to signage. So, if you guys have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them. And then, the Bullmans are in the audience. They're the petitioners, and I'm sure they'll be happy to answer any questions you have.
The signage aspect of it, we're talking primarily permanent signage identifying the building, or some of it included as temporary signage?
It's all permanent signage.
Okay.
There's a sign plan. It's up on the screen. The center, it's, that's a suspended sign there. It's a microphone. And then, there will be signage on each side of that.
Okay.
How will this, the size of the signage compare to other businesses in the area?
We didn't do an analysis of that, but I think that it's very compatible with what's in the area. It's, the design that they're showing as well is very much in keeping with the downtown area with the external gooseneck lighting instead of, you know, the bright, brighter channel letters.
I also think that if they were only to ask for signage on one side of the microphone, microphone hanging sign, that it would appear off balance. So, I think they're trying to balance. They can address that if they would like, but from our perspective, it appears that they're trying to balance the signage on the front edge.
I agree with the comment about the signs balancing each other out. I also think it's a reasonable request. They need larger signage there than what would normally appear. And it's spanning basically the entire front of the building, so I think it's, I think it's appropriate.
My first take on it, when I read what a large variance it would be, was a little alarming, but when I saw the, the graphic showing how the building had the peak and he had the signs on both sides, I agree with it being balanced. And it might be a large percentage variance, but I think it looks good.
And it looks good the way they have it, instead of blocking the windows or anything like that, and it'd be highly visible. We've always had unusual exceptions downtown in an area that, you know, is over 100 years old, where parking wasn't an issue until cars were invented. Any other comments before we open it up to the public?
Well, I walked by it the other day, and what they're doing is very impressive. And I think they would benefit from having a good sign showing that this is a good place to come and enjoy.
Okay.
I just had a question on the parking. You were saying that the overlay would have required them, if that was in place now, excuse me, eight spots. They currently only have three that they're...
Correct. They still would, would be required to get a variation. It would just would be much reduced from the variation that they're asking for currently.
And did I read this correctly, are those three spots in the back of the building?
That's correct. They're on the site plan. Three spots are here. They're currently existing now.
But I agree, there's so much public parking available between Metro and our station and everything else. Okay.
Any other comments or questions? At this point, we'll open it up to the public. Does anyone in the audience have anything to say? Any further discussion or motions?
I would make a motion to pass along to the Village Board, a positive recommendation for item number 19-12, the 120 Live at 120 West Bartlett Avenue. Second.
Okay, it's been moved by George, seconded by Charlie. At this point, we shall close the public hearing portion. Any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Joe Vannell?
Yes.
Bobbaccaro?
Yes.
Guy Papa?
Yes.
Michelle Sarwis?
Yes.
Charlie DeVoe?
Yes.
Mike Wearden?
Yes.
And George Cosio?
Yes.
Okay, we shall pass on a positive recommendation to the Village Board. Stay in touch with Renee to see when it appears on the agenda. Probably soon, right?
They have their hearing next week before the Plan Commission for the special uses.
Okay. Okay, the next item on the agenda is case number 19-15, 211 Gatewood Lane. Variations. Are the petitioners present? Okay. You want to come up to the microphone? Do we have the evidence of the mailings, the newspaper, and the sign?
Yes, I do.
Mark those exhibits A, B, and C. Please raise your right hand. You soundly affirm that the evidence you're about to give is only the whole truth?
Yes.
Okay, please state your name and address for the record.
Božana Strojic, 211 Gatewood Lane and Bartlett.
Okay, go ahead and present your case.
We just wanted to ask for your consideration for us to put up a six-foot fence where a four-foot is allowed. We're by, a corner lot by a pretty busy street which is Gerber, and we have two small kids and a pretty intimidating dog. So, he scares people when they walk by. And our kids, we want to be able to have them run around without us having to watch them 100 percent of the time. We would just feel safer without strangers driving by seeing what's all going on. So, it's for privacy and safety of our kiddos.
So, when I was out there, I noticed that the current fence is very close to the sidewalk. The drawing would appear that it's going to be a 10-foot setback?
Correct, yeah.
Or the taller fence?
Correct. The existing three-foot fence is up to the property line. So, they'll be pulling the fence back 10 feet from the existing fence that's out there.
Probably, I'm just always concerned about ones that are right along the sidewalk where you can't see what's on the other side. And this, it's a very busy area there. And normally, this would be quite a stretch for, I think, a fence that high right there, but given the traffic area, it probably is justified. Now, according to the picture and what's circled here, I take it it's going to be a fairly solid fence?
Yeah, that...
That one? And the, it's all wood, or is it? Okay.
Wood.
Sometimes that can be a maintenance issue.
I feel that it wouldn't be a problem for my husband. He's very good at maintaining.
Any further questions from the board?
I just have a comment, considering the committee of the whole meeting on Tuesday and the discussion about changing our fence ordinance. I guess staff, correct me if I'm wrong, but this would fit right in with what is being looked at as a permanent change.
Correct. So, the Village Board directed staff to look into possibly allowing six-foot fences in corner side yards. We looked, we did analysis of all the fence variations that we've had since 1999, 91. And from, since 2002, the zoning board and the Village Board has approved fences as long as they are 10 feet off the property line. So, we felt this was the proposed text amendment that you'll be seeing next month, is to make this a permanent change, that if someone has their fence set off 10 feet from their corner side property line, they could go up to six feet in height.
And there's some distinction, distinction given from major streets or minor streets, or...
For major arterials, which would be Lake Street, County Farm, and Route 59, we would allow people to go up to six inches because we don't want to have an area that's not being maintained. There's only eight lots in the village that would qualify as having a corner side yard along one of those major arterials. A lot of those already have fences up to the property line. A lot of times, the developer puts those in initially instead of having the homeowner having to come in at a later date.
And it's anticipated that'll go in front of, we'll do the public hearing on it?
Correct. You'll be doing the public hearing on that next month.
Well, and in consideration of all of that, I don't have a problem with this.
I had a nice visit with the owner and explained to me what he wanted to do, and it all made good sense. And the 10-foot setback.
Well, we've had some issues even along Struckman Boulevard, which is a kind of a busy thoroughfare, too. And I was actually out there tonight, and I couldn't believe all the traffic on Gerber going by. I was glad that I was turning right to come back here instead of left on the Gerber. So, it makes a whole lot of sense to have more privacy on that corner.
Even his temporary fence looks good.
Yes.
I think especially with children, in this day and age, it's, you need to give some protection to them when they're out there on such a busy street.
We were always concerned with ones that were high, where you couldn't see through them along the sidewalk for fear of maybe a vicious dog on the other side, or somebody trying to grab kids coming along, or rob somebody, or, you know. And at least 10 feet back, it's not likely going to happen.
That clearance, right?
Yes.
No, agreed.
We also think this would make a more uniform look when you're going down streets. A lot of times, people have a four-foot fence. They wanted the six-foot fence. They didn't want to go through the variance process. So, then they have shrubs that are almost overgrown into the sidewalk. So, we're thinking if we allow people the six-foot fence, but have it setback further and avoid some of those issues as well.
We had an issue like this along Granache, which is right off Devon Avenue, close to Prospect. And, you know, you have the six-foot fence, and then because of the lock configuration, all of a sudden, they had to come down to, I think, a three-foot fence. And it kind of looks ridiculous where the six-foot would have been more practical. But we, we've always kind of been allergic to six-foot fences. Now, things, the winds of change are beginning to blow. Any other discussion? Any, okay, we'll open this up to the public. Does anybody in the public have any comments? At this point, I shall entertain a motion.
The doors are locked. I just said it, so we couldn't have the traffic. It is 2:00 this afternoon.
Okay, public hearing is here for the fence variation on Gatewood.
Okay, I thought it was the building. It certainly is Mr. Wearden, sorry.
Oh, that one, we've already had the hearing on We, there was a problem with the front doors.
If you want to, if you want to let him speak to be on the record, we can add him to the record?
Yeah, we can add you, Mike, to the record. Let, let's just finish this one up, and then we can...
Mike, Mike, there will be a public hearing next week as well.
Hmm? Yes. Any, any motions?
A motion to approve.
Second. Okay, Charlie, seconded by Guy.
Yes.
To approve at this point, we shall close the public hearing portion. Any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Joe Vannell?
Yes.
Bobbaccaro?
Yes.
Guy Papa?
Yes.
Michelle Sarwis?
Yes.
Charlie DeVoe?
Yes.
Mike Wearden?
Yes.
George Cosio?
Yes.
Okay, motion passed. Stay in touch with...
Thank you.
Renee?
Kristy.
Kristy has it this time, to find out when it's on the Village Board. Okay, should we just make a vote to reopen the other one for...
You could reopen the, the public hearing and let Mr. Kelly speak and on the record, sure.
Do we need a motion for that?
I think you should, yes.
Yes.
And Mike, I think you should...
I understand, a motion to reopen the public hearing on the 120 Bartlett Avenue.
Second.
Since the doors were locked, I know, I need a motion for that? Joe, well, Joe...
I move that we move forward, a motion to reopen hearing.
Okay, seconded by Michelle.
Sorry.
Moved by Joe, seconded by Michelle to open the public hearing. Okay, Mike?
Do we need a vote?
Oh, yeah. Do we need a vote?
Yeah.
Let's, let's vote on this.
To open it?
Yes.
Okay. Bobbaccaro?
Yes.
Guy Papa?
Hold on.
Guy Papa?
Yes.
Okay. Michelle Sarwis?
Yes.
Charlie DeVoe?
Yes.
Mike Wearden?
Yes.
George Cosio?
Yes.
Joe Vannell?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, Mike, just when you get a chance later, fill out one of those forms. Go ahead.
Anyway, for the record, Mike Kelly, K-O-Y, I own the building. When I came in, Mr. Wearden, when you were closing it, I assumed it was that. I've been trying to get in since 2:00 after 7:00. So, for the record, the meeting, there was somebody else who's leaving, too. So, there may very well have been someone else who wanted to be at this meeting and they couldn't get in because, for reasons I don't know why, the building was locked while the meeting...
There was a problem with the light out there, it was not...
Changed the security.
Well, whatever it is, the, the building was locked during the meeting. So, in any event, so I have no idea what was said. So, I'm not commenting on anything anybody said because I don't know. But as long as I'm here, my concern is, a concern I have is the, the outdoor entertainment that evidently they're going to have next door. So, I guess all I can say is, is to register my concern because I don't know what they said, and I certainly can't comment on it because they didn't say anything. So, it's certainly backwards to be commenting at a meeting that you couldn't get to. But that's a big concern to me. I think it's a big concern to a lot of people around there. There's a lot of residential, there's residential literally next door. In a year or so, I'll be putting a residence on top of my office, so there'll be residents there. There's residents, a couple of doors toward the dentist's office, behind it, there's residences. So, there's a lot of people that are going to be affected by the noise at night. The, if you ever, back in there in the evening, the sounds just echo. So, you have a residential, and the village has for years promoted their residences in that area. So, we have a huge change. Additionally, I got to just register a question, at least put it on the record. I saw that that building was shut down at least twice for not having permits. But while the, the building, while they were shut down, they were building on it anyway, all day, every day. So, that didn't seem to mean anything. I don't think there's been any zoning granted to it yet, but there's been clearly a lot of work done. So, I don't know if that has any effect on what the boards do and don't do, but it sort of seemed to me you're supposed to follow some rules. And that doesn't set the best example for everybody else who's told they have to when someone's shut down and they just keep working. So, that's what I have to say, those two items.
Just, just so you know, Mike, what was discussed tonight was not the special use permit for, for the noise, for the, not the noise, for the...
Well, that's why I said...
Live entertainment. Bad choice of words. So, tonight, they discussed the variations for the wall signage and the off-street parking, reducing the number of off-street parking spaces, and the required open space. So, if you are concerned about the live entertainment, that's going to be next Thursday at the Plan Commission.
Well, I am concerned about the parking, and I want these people to be successful. We all do. But this is a major problem. When I built my building, I was required by this village to build a parking lot in the back. It seems now, if you don't have the space, oh, okay, you don't have it. So, I don't know what the plan is. I know these ladies and gentlemen are here in the evenings. I don't know a lot of the people who work for the village or not, so it's up to you guys to, to take note, like right tonight, when I left from the office over here. There's no parking at all, none, zero. So, where everybody's going to park, I don't know. But it seems like somebody smarter than me better figure out. We got the new bar across the street, this place, there got to be some, something has to be done with parking, more than just three parking places in the back. And, and that's, that's a problem anyone's going to face. But I do hold it kind of to, close to my, my billfold because I had to build a parking lot. And, and I hope it's not the, going to be the rule, well, if you don't have the property, you don't have to do it. So, I don't know, but anyway, that's, I'm sure you're all aware of that. And while I'm here, one last thing if I can add, the, the lights on Bartlett Avenue have not been on for a month. So, for whoever's...
The village, the village lights?
Village lights, it's pitch black.
Okay, we can look at that.
I'm just telling you, I, as long as we're here...
Wow.
Might as well just make that a part of it because Lucy and Louise will confirm that with me, that that's the way it is at night.
Okay.
Am I correct?
Okay, we can, we can try to look at that.
I understand, it's not why I came here.
That's fine, that's fine, but you are on the record.
Yes. Thank you, Mike.
We're just going to check to make sure there's no one else that might want to speak.
Okay.
Just in case, the doors are still locked. We apologize for that. We did not know until, just, you know, before the meeting.
Lucy, you didn't have anything to say? Yeah.
You have to come to the microphone, and you need to fill out a form when you're, when you're finished, if you could, just so we have it for the record, okay?
After I finish, I have to film up?
Okay.
Well, my concern was that, that you're going to be taking care of next, next week. And it will be, when he came and talked to me about the business that he wanted to open over there, and I told, he, the way he told me, and I said, well, you know what, that's going to be great because I always think that if we have more business, it will be more people around. And if we have more variety of business and restaurants, I keep telling them, then one week, they will be in the Chinese restaurant, another will be in my restaurant, and another will be in the pasta, and another, whatever, right? But, and I keep telling him it was great, but when, now that they told me it's going to be just outside, music, and I'm going to be living upstairs. I, I'm, I'm trying to finish an apartment that I have upstairs, and I want to live there because I live in Chicago, and sometimes when it's snowing, or it's whatever, you know how it's the winter time, I want to be able to stay there and sleep. This is not going to happen because of the noise. And that's my main concern. He told me it's going to be karaoke inside, and it's going to be bar outside, and, and that's great. I think that's great. If you have more business and if they are successful, then it will be more people, and everybody will be better. My only concern is what kind of business is, what kind of people is going to come? I had, I had an employee that he was working in one of Um, I had, I had, um, an employee that he was working in one of the bars around here, and he was telling me on the weekends, it's a very crazy, people come and do weed, do all kinds, all these kinda stuff in this bar, in one different bars, but especially in that bar that he was working. And that was my concern. I don't want, like, nothing that is gonna be extremely loud or extremely late, because I'm gonna be living there. There is another apartment in the same building that he, my cook, is living there, and he's sleeping, is gonna be sleeping, trying to sleep, trying to rest. And that's my main concern. Other than that, as long as...
Aren't, uh, there earlier restrictions during the weekend, or on the weekend, or something like that?
We're, we'll be suggesting to Plan Commission next week that they place a condition on special use for live entertainment, that any amplified noise on the outside of the business, um, cease at eleven o'clock Monday through Saturday, and at ten o'clock on Sundays. And the reason that we came up with those is because that's consistent with our noise ordinance, our, our amplification ordinance.
It, it does go till eleven o'clock during the week? Okay, so, Lucy, for those kinds of concerns, uh, come back next Thursday to the Plan Commission meeting, 'cause they're going to be talking about stuff like that.
You know what? I just remember what, like, on, on October, when we had the Atom Fest, the, the, this fest...
Oktoberfest?
On which one?
Oktoberfest.
Yes, the one that we do, um, which one? Heritage, heritage.
Oh, her, yeah.
Okay, I, that's especially one that I can remember right now. That's when Bruce bring musical, uh, live music. And we are across from the other street to my, to, to the restaurant, and I can hear perfectly what they are doing, because of the, of the loud, so loud it is. I can imagine if it's gonna be just by my side, just by my window bedroom. That's my only concern. I, I don't wanna make any problems. You know what, another thing is, a, a lot of my customers, they come and ask me, oh my God, you are expanding, what are you doing? I say, sorry, guys, this is not me. How come? I say, no, that's not me. That's the next restaurant. What it's gonna be? Pizza, pizza with a bar. Oh my God, no, that's horrible. That's gonna be pizza. I say, well, no, no, don't say that, because you never know. It might be a good one. It must be, they say, well, I don't know. I say, well, just, just let it be, and then, let's see. Maybe the service, maybe the food, everything is gonna be great, and then you're gonna be happy about it. But, when I tell them that there's gonna be, um, bar outside and, um, games, these machines for the games, and I say, I don't know, that's not family. And I say, well, this is family. My restaurant is for a family. You wanna have fun, you'll probably go there. If you wanna have a, a drink or whatever, right? Then I say, well, okay. But this is what they've been telling me about it. They, that's not gonna be a family. Of course, it's not gonna be a family, because it's gonna be a bar. It's a different one, but, I don't know, it's just they are concerned about, it's not gonna be, how do I explain this? They get, they, they, they think it's gonna be like the other bar, other bars, that they smoke weed, that they, they do whatever they do. I don't know what they do, because I don't, I'm not been there, and they, they just been telling me, like, different stories, right? And because I, I never been there, and I didn't witness, I, I won't be able to tell you what they, they had telling me, and because it's, I don't know if it's true or not. But that's a concern, but my main concern was just the, the noise. And of course, the weed. I don't, I don't think so the weed is, is a good thing for, for, for a village, not for a village, for a neighborhood. I think it's an open, it's an, that's the open for another.
I, I think you and Mike have both brought up valid concerns for people that are going to be living on that block. And so, um, again, you need to voice those next week at the hearing to have some influence, perhaps. It seems, it seems to me that eleven o'clock might be a little bit late if the amplifiers are kinda loud, and you have a migraine, and your store closes, and you're trying to get to sleep maybe at ten o'clock, and you can't do it.
And, and it's not only me.
Yeah.
It's, it's people who's gonna be living behind the restaurant, behind my restaurant, there is, is, these, these houses, they, they live people there. People who's gonna be by the Chinese restaurant, they, there is people living over there, too. Like I said, if I can hear Bruce's music, which is across the street, how loud it's gonna be, but I don't even know how loud it's gonna be the other one, right? But that's my concern, the mu- the music, the loud, they don't...
Probably for Heritage Days, that what was coming from Banbury Fair would have been louder than, um, what you might be hearing on your block, I, I would think. I don't know, 'cause a lot of people are downtown for that.
You know what?
But this is something to, to bring up next week.
Yeah, I, I, I understand, and, and I'm okay when you having live music, I don't know, whatever the, four times a, a year, whatever the, the occasion, right? But not every day, or, well, not every weekend, or no, so not too late. I don't, I, I'm gonna have to come back next week. I, I didn't wanna talk in front of them, because that's gonna be my neighbor.
Yeah.
And that's gonna be hard.
Twenty-four seven, if you, when you move out there.
I'm gonna have to be honest with him.
Right.
And he, when he came and told me, he never told me it's gonna be alive. And when he told me, and I says, I start telling him, you know what, that's my problem. Sometimes I talk what I'm, I shouldn't, what I'm thinking, sometimes I shouldn't say it, but, but I'm just trying to be honest.
Well, that's the purpose of a public hearing, to, to get all these things out in the open to discuss. And, you know, especially for the people that are down having to face what's happening. It's just like when we talked about a six-foot fence, you know, if maybe a neighbor across the street objected to it, then we would take that into consideration. You're right next door, so that's something to be concerned about. And Mike is on the same block, too.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Can I, I just need to fill this out?
Does your son have anything? Do you have anything to say? No? Okay. Okay. We, we presume that the door is cleared?
Okay.
Okay. Next item on the agenda?
Don't you need to, I think you need to close, close...
Yeah, that's right. Let's close this public hearing. Do we need a, we don't need a roll call vote?
So moved.
All right, moved.
Second.
Moved by Joe, second by Charlie. Any discussion? These unusual circumstance, in forty years, I've never seen that happen.
Sergeant Charlie.
Let's call the roll.
Bob Caro?
Yes.
Guy Papa?
Yes.
Michelle Sarwis?
Yes.
Charlie DeVoe?
Yes.
Mike Wearden?
Yes.
George Cosio?
Yes.
And Joe Bano?
Yes.
Did I miss anybody?
Okay, last item on the agenda, I think it's the last one, right? Is case number nineteen dash thirteen, adult-use cannabis text amendments. Do we have mailings, newspaper, and signs?
The certificate of publication and the newspaper.
Okay.
This hearing.
That's right, we wouldn't need mailings.
Okay, mark those exhibit saving, A and V. Go ahead.
As most of you know, last summer, Governor Pritzker signed into law House Bill fourteen thirty-eight, which is the Cannabis Regulation and Tax Act. What this law does is, beginning on January first, twenty twenty, the, it legalizes the consumption of cannabis by anyone over the age of twenty-one. The law provides for an expansion of cannabis dispensing, growing, and processing beyond what's currently legal now with, uh, medical marijuana. The law recognizes the need for municipalities to regulate the time, place, and manner of these new business enterprises. So, this summer, we brought to the Village Board the idea of addressing the adult-use cannabis businesses, and how we would address those in the zoning ordinance. The Village Board Committee discussed it, continued their conversation to the fall on the, at the meeting of September seventeenth. The board decided that, or directed staff to prepare a text amendment that basically treats the adult-use cannabis businesses the same as the zoning ordinance currently, um, regulates medical dispensaries and cultivation centers. The state law also, um, licenses some additional businesses that aren't related to medical, in that they're allowing for craft growers of cannabis, for the transportation of cannabis, um, infuser operations and processing. So, the text amendment before you addresses all of those businesses. We define all of the businesses that, um, the state law addresses. Most of them are prohibited village-wide. The only two uses that the Village Board decided were appropriate were the dispensaries and the cultivation operations. So, the text amendment allows for those businesses by special use in the I-1 and the I-2 EDA zoning districts with the same distancing requirements as medical marijuana facilities currently. The text amendment goes a little bit further, though, and it limits the total number of these businesses within the village. There is, um, a limitation of two adult-use cannabis dispensing locations and two adult-use cannabis cultivation operations. And further, they're limited to one in the Blue Heron Industrial Park and one in the Brewster Creek Industrial Park. So, this text amendment, there are several sections of the zoning ordinance that has to be amended in order to set forth these regulations. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Well, I have a question. Why aren't we allowing, uh, craft growers and this infuser? I mean, uh, if we're gonna allow it, uh, for dispensing and cultivation, why prohibit these others? Doesn't make sense to me.
The Village Board determined that, um, potential negative effects of regulating those businesses wasn't necessarily offset with, um, the tax increases or the special taxes that can be levied with the dispensing operations.
I think we ought to allow the business, or not allow, one of the two, and not pick at it like this.
Is that what we're determining today, or is that something the Village Board determines?
I, I actually don't understand. You'll have to educate me on why this is presented in front of the Zoning Board of Appeals.
The Village Board provided the direction, the, the broad policy direction. And in order for that policy to be enacted, there has to be an amendment to the zoning ordinance. The zoning ordinance will be the document that regulates these businesses. And you guys, um, have the authority to hold the public hearing for any text amendments to the zoning ordinance.
Okay.
So, for clarification, like, craft growers, this would be, um, for putting it, like, in bakery items or stuff like?
No, craft growers, that's the, the, the growers, the cultivators.
Okay.
So, most of the cultivation operations are huge operations. So, the state law allows for this additional class of growers for, uh, much smaller operations. And I think the reason that the state did that is to try to include more people in this business enterprise, 'cause the cultivation centers that are currently operating are huge, huge operations that cost lots of money. But again, the Village Board, um, so far, didn't see any value in opening that up, in allowing for those small growers.
Remember them talking about, uh, the offset cost of regulation and enforcement potential?
Correct.
So, craft growers are something smaller in scale?
Correct.
Still more than, if you will, a hobbyist?
A hobbyist won't be allowed. Um, that was one difference. A lot of state laws allow home growers. The state of Illinois does not.
And if I understand this correctly, what I see happening is a refinement of what was already in place, because of the fact that you've got, uh, recreation use coming into the picture.
That's correct. We, the zoning ordinance currently allows for medical cultivators and medical dispensaries by special use in the I-1 and the I-2 EDA zoning districts with the same distancing requirements as we're proposing here. So, the map that's up is really hard to see. That, the area Christie's pointing out there, and then the area up in Blue Heron, those are the only places in the village where you could apply for a special use for a medical cultivation center. So, those will be the same places that you would be able to apply for a special use for adult-use cannabis. The only difference is, there's a further limitation. There'll only be one maximum dispensary, one maximum cultivation operation in Brewster Creek, and then one each in Blue Heron.
It appears that those areas are quite small. Are those presently empty sites?
They are not. Those areas are just identified because they have the correct zoning, and they meet the distancing requirement of either a thousand or twenty-five hundred feet from a school, a daycare center, or residentially zoned properties.
There is, or maybe I'm mistaken, I drove by this Zone One to EDA today, and there is a, uh, daycare center in that section, or maybe I misread the sign. I, I'm not sure where exactly how to explain it.
You have to be more specific.
It's, um, oh, God. Well, anyway, I guess the point being that if somebody wanted to put one in there, it would, if it's there, like I thought I saw, that they would have to be at least the, the parameters away from that particular, uh, daycare center.
That's correct, yes.
All right.
Then how does future business, let's say a dispensary goes in off of Route twenty-five, and there's some undeveloped land on the other side of the street, which would be South Elgin, I, I guess, but are there any restrictions placed on new business coming in, be, a daycare center across the street, because there's a facility, a cannabis facility on the other side of the street?
We wouldn't require them to shut down if a daycare facility were to position itself across the street.
I mean, they would be aware that it's there.
We would allow the daycare to go in. If they chose to, we would...
Right, right.
I understand what you're saying, that once they're there, you can't penalize them afterwards, but...
Right, right.
Somebody makes the...
So, nobody has applied for the medical or the, well, the commercial one we're just working on, but...
There was a petition for a cultivation operation back twenty thirteen, was it? Twenty thirteen, twenty fourteen?
Okay.
Just when the state was legalizing medical. And it went through the process. It was, um, a site in Brewster Creek. It went through the process, but they ended up not getting their license from the state.
Yeah, okay, I did read that.
It didn't, yes, it wasn't like I did.
I did get a kick out of the fact that you can't smoke marijuana in a hotel or an inn. Like, how did that, where did that come from? I mean, I, it's just a side note.
It, it's the same as the Illinois Smoking Act.
Yes, yeah, I got it.
That's why.
It seems to me that the village is not interested in getting these kinda businesses, 'cause, number one, they're making the areas there where they can go quite small, and then they're adding on all these other uses that are prohibited, that it's, I don't know what businesses that are gonna be, you know, in that, uh, field will wanna do this. Seems like, you know, we're basically saying, no, we don't want you.
Hardcore people that are determined to have it, maybe, right?
We, we have had...
Dispensaries are gonna get the business.
We have had some people call and ask, you know, what our regulations are and that sort of thing. And there is a, um, medical dispensary currently in St. Charles that's in the industrial area, 'cause their ordinance also required that they be located in industrial parks.
So, even though that area looks small, it's not small. If you take a drive through Brewster Creek or Blue Heron, those are large areas. So, for somebody to set up, uh, this operation, they would, they would have plenty of room. And I think there's plenty of open space for them to, uh, try and do that. I think the map does not do justice to the actual area in Brewster Creek.
And the map is, is, uh, as you can see, for dispensing, is, the area is much larger, and there is vacant land available, and we have had some inquiries for dispensaries.
Yeah, I think the dispensaries would be where they're gonna get the draw from people, because they are, they're able to sell all the different forms. What they're stopping here is, sounds like, at least, the people coming in, making all those different products. But where the dispensaries can go out, and they can source them and bring them in, and redistribute, we just, uh, don't want them making it right here. So, I mean, I agree, it's kind of like, you agree with one, but you don't want the other. But I guess in the name of limiting how much of this type of business comes into the village, it makes some, some sense to limit something on it.
When I looked at this, I, I envisioned it's a way for the village to control, without saying no. So, we are allowing it to... So we are allowing it to happen, but we're saying where it can happen and at what numbers it can happen. And I think that's reasonable.
I remember at one public thing, they were talking about how much control the state is holding for itself in violations even, right, going at what they, they're reserving a lot of power for themselves. We have just some limited control.
Correct. The state does all the, will be doing all the licensing, requiring security measures, inventory control, inspections, that sort of thing. But the state law specifically gives municipalities the right to further regulate these businesses and even gave municipalities the right to opt out completely, to say that none of the adult-use cannabis operations would be allowed in the municipality.
I believe homeroomed towns like Bartlett would be allowed to raise a special tax, right?
That's correct. There is an occupation tax on any sales of cannabis in the municipality, up to 3%.
Is the new law, has it increased the number of medical cannabis dispensaries?
No, the state law, it didn't increase the number of licenses available for medical. However, I don't think there, the state is to the number of medical cultivation or dispensaries that they set when they leak.
So it would be, would it, well, would it be possible for a company to want to come in and put in a dispensary for both medical and adult cannabis dispensing? Would that be considered one facility or two in the disordinance?
Well, we don't limit the number of medical dispensaries. So it would count as the one dispensary for adult use.
All right, good clarification. Anything else?
What's, what are your thoughts?
I kind of agree with George in that this gives the village control over it, rather than just opting out. Quite stringent control. To be honest, when this first came about, my first reaction, I think we have a pretty conservative village board, and my first thought was, you know, there's no way that, it was my belief that there was no way that the current village board was gonna, you know, allow this in any fashion. And I was at the one meeting where there was a discussion, so I think they want tight control. One comment was, there's the thought that, you know, there are going to be issues. We don't have any control over, I mean, the state made the law and it's coming now. Whether, I mean, one of the big issues obviously is no spot test or immediate test for.
Impaired driving.
Impaired driving, exactly right. So we're still gonna have those issues if there's a dispensing facility in Streamwood or in South Elgin, and we don't have one for our residents, so they're still gonna get it and they're still gonna use it. So why not control what's going on, at least from the dispensing, and get some tax revenue to be able to use to add to, you know, whatever police enforcement you need or, you know, any other issues that come up? So it's not gonna be, in my opinion, a moneymaker. I mean, if we're, if the thought is that this is gonna bring in tax revenue, well, then I think we're going about it completely wrong. Because you have something, and I think the comment at one village board meeting was made, you know, if South Elgin has something on Randall Road, that facility is gonna dispense a heck of a lot more cannabis than something tucked away into a business park. So, I mean, I kind of see where they're going, and I think it gives us control, but I don't think it's gonna be a moneymaker if that's what one thought is.
I think that had come out, I believe they said Villa Park and maybe Glendale Heights were allowing it kind of like all over almost, which you could have a saturation point.
Be like video gaming.
Yeah.
I think this is so restrictive that we should just basically say no, or we should remove all these prohibitions and just allow it. I mean, you just either allow it or you don't. This is, just like Bob, what you said, who's gonna, well, some will go, but who's gonna really go into these industrial areas to buy the stuff? They're not even gonna know that the places are there. You need to put these places on major thoroughfares. That's where it's gonna get sold. So we should either go in all the way or just stay out of it.
Guy, you had a thought?
Well, I think if we don't make a statement upfront, which says, these are the places that you cannot open a facility and control the number of them, we run the risk of having them anywhere along Route 59, Lake Street, and I don't think that's what the residents want. Like I said earlier, it's a way of saying yes, but in a very controlled fashion.
Guy?
One question that I would have is, and I don't know the answer to this, but although it's going to be legal in January in Illinois, federally it's still illegal. Is that gonna prohibit any federally funded grants or any issues with that that Bartlett's receiving right now by passing this?
I don't think so, and certainly Illinois isn't the first state to legalize. And I've never heard of that being an issue.
We still have issues in banking with making deposits over $10,000 in cash.
They do, but the way, there's a workaround that with credit unions.
Yeah, what they're doing, they're not accepting any credit card payments, anything like that. It's either cash. Some of the states won't accept any credit unions at this point, but the other ones that are getting around it are going credit unions. So that was my only concern, is if we're gonna miss out on any funding federally because of it.
I've never heard that happening, and I haven't heard that concern raised. In fact, there, well, statewide, there will be some policing funds that will be coming our way to help with things like identifying impairment from marijuana and that sort of thing.
Anything else? Any motions?
I guess I did have a question before we, so, before the motion. So we are voting on this packet and approving this, whether this is gonna go forward to the board, as it is right here. Okay.
You can change it, so that's up to you.
We can make changes in here.
Right.
I didn't.
This is a proposed text amendment.
Right.
You can break up your vote, or you can change what's on here. It's entirely up to you.
I think it's well thought out. The discussions I've heard at village meetings, committee of the whole, a lot of the points are, again, well thought out, carefully planned. And it just, I don't have a problem with anything. I think it's well done. I'm ready to go.
I think if we do pass it, I think the prohibited use language in here is good just because, in my opinion, it looks like the village is saying, okay, we'll allow it. We'll reap whatever tax benefit we can from this, but we're gonna completely limit the areas that this can be used at. And at least it gives our police power to enforce that. And because, I've been out to Las Vegas recently, and you can't go anywhere without just the saturation in the air of it. It's everywhere, and that's a place that it's legal, and I'd hate to see that here. And I think this kind of implements and restricts that. I don't know if you agree or not, but to me, that's what it seems.
That's kind of what I was thinking along, you know, I understand, Joe, what you were saying, that it gets, you know, we're either accept it or we don't, and there's so many prohibitive things in here. But I think if you don't put those controls in, at least at the onset, you open it up to so many things to police and try to control. And, you know, just employing the certain age that I do, we can put these, I mean, you could hide it under a rock in a dark alley someplace, and if they want it, they're going to know where it is. It's going to sell. They're going to find it. You know, so I don't know that, you know, you're not gonna see the business back there. But I think you do touch on a point, that if we've got not only, you know, the dispensaries and the adult usage and that, but you start opening it up to the growers and the ones who are, you know, manufacturing all these different products, and you've got all these different businesses all over, that is an awful lot for a village our size to try, you know, public safety perspective, to try to keep a grasp on not only the business that's being, you know, that's happening, but the, you know, public that it's bringing, you know, the people that it's bringing in and that are maybe hanging around there or whatever. I think that's, it's a quid in undertaking at that point. So I'd be concerned about some safety things at that point.
The state is allowing the use of cannabis, whether we like it or not. That's the law. So people are gonna get it, the people that want to use it, and we're gonna have to smell the marijuana wherever now. And these, what we're doing here in the village is not gonna change that one iota.
Correct. But it wouldn't either if we just said no. The usage is still gonna be there.
Yes, yep.
You know, if we just ban the distribution or the dispensing anyplace in the village, the issues of use, whatever they may be, impaired driving, you know, the smell, product getting to underage teenagers, that's all still gonna exist.
I guess on the lighter side, property is very valuable. And this, if this, these areas go to growing areas, in some ways, it's going to preserve open space as opposed to having everything completely built up.
All cultivation operations have to be in an enclosed building.
Oh, in the enclosed building, okay. I knew there was some fencing area issues, okay.
That's why the large cultivation operations, it's, that's a very expensive enterprise. That's.
It makes sense.
Big business, yes.
More security and make sure people aren't getting in there for freebies.
Right.
I have to say it again, I think it's really important that we make a statement before all this happens on 1-1. Because we need to say where we want it, how many we want, so that we have some control in what happens along the, I'm gonna call it the regular commercial areas, 59 Lake Street, Army Trail, whatever. And it covers us right from the get-go, the way we want it. If we don't do this, then I see the possibility of anyone coming in and asking to open up a dispensary anywhere. And that's not what we want to do. And the state has given us the privilege of being able to control that. So I think that's the right thing to do.
You know, I remember at one point last summer at one of the board meetings, they were talking about, they just kind of phoned different municipalities in the area, and the vast majority hadn't even addressed any of these issues with this 1-120 deadline coming down on us. And when I first got on the zoning board in 1979, the village had a moratorium on zoning because we didn't even have a big comprehensive zoning map at the time and ordinances, and they were, had mass rezonings. And we were at a time when there was heavy building going on. In fact, Bartlett was in the top three for a number of years. We vied between, you know, 1, 2, and 3 as far as building permits being issued in a month. And this went on for several years. And the best time to get a handle on this is before everybody's knocking at the door to try to influence policy. And even though I don't like the idea of recreational marijuana being legal in the state, there's nothing we can do about it because it's already happened. So we do need some type of regulation, and we need to address it before the wave is at our door. And there's a lot of pressure. Look at how many people are in the audience tonight on a hearing like this that has potential for major impact. We've already made statements about it being in the air and stuff like that, you know? And the, as Michelle had pointed out, at the onset, it's probably good to have heavier regulation. That could always be.
You can always loosen it.
Loosen it later.
Back up once you open the reins.
Yes, it's very hard to tighten up after it's already widespread. And there is a lot that has gone into this. And I would feel better if we had better technology in being able to detect impaired driving. And I'm sure that's going to come in time. But, you know, we need to be on top of things before the, we need to ride the wave before it comes in on us.
I think the question of being impaired is gonna affect a lot of things, you know, even, I mean, for a business like mine, I mean, you know, it's, we have a zero policy, you know, zero tolerance for being under the influence of anything. But with this, it's gonna be very hard. It's like, I can't, there's not a breathalyzer yet to test. You know, testing hair blood, well, it stays in the system for 30 days. So that doesn't tell me if they're impaired at the moment they're on the shift. So it does, it brings up a whole lot of problems for multiple industries across the board that we don't have a solution to yet, but it's coming nonetheless.
Yeah, I heard something on the radio this morning about the CHA is not allowing it in public housing, I guess. There was something this morning, they said that they don't care what state law is. They don't want to have the high risk of people causing problems in CHA.
And there certainly are ways to test for it, for impaired driving.
Yes.
But it makes it a little more difficult. I'm sure the officer has seen it, if we want to hear his thoughts on it. But there's a certain number of nanograms, I believe it's 10. What is it?
Five.
Five. But again, the driver has to submit to a blood test to identify that amount. And additionally, there's also drug recognition officers that are trained in that. But in some of the counties, it makes it difficult because it's their observations against the defense attorney. So it's a little more difficult, but there are ways to.
It's harder than alcohol impairment, though.
Correct, yes.
Any other thoughts? I mean, they're looking to us to set the groundwork here. And, I mean, for the most part, when we make a recommendation for them to overrule it, it takes a supermajority. So in effect, we are setting the policy because it doesn't happen too often that they overrule us. And remember, we are a volunteer board. We're not a convol to the electorate. Are there any specifics? Are there any specifics that you would like to change or delete? Any of these prohibitions or anything else in here?
Well, I would like to remove those prohibitions in those two allowed areas. That's my personal feeling.
Specifically, where are you, are you...
I mean, basically, you're saying almost all of those.
In the two areas that we're allowing to business park.
The two areas, yeah. The I-1 and the I-2 areas, those are the two allowed areas. I would remove the prohibited uses of the cannabis. You know, the, the one is the adult-use cannabis craft grower, the other's infuser, the other's processing organization or processor, and the transporting organizer or transporter. Those are the prohibited uses.
So you would take, on the first page, where it says, we have dispensing of, cultivation of, craft growers, transportation, cannabis infusers, to allow all five operations
Yes.
in any of the allowed areas?
In those two allowed areas.
As special uses, similar to the dispensary and the cultivation, is that what you're saying? To allow as special uses?
In addition to dispensing and cultivation, I would allow the craft growers, the transportation, and the cannabis infusers.
By special use? Do they have to get a special use permit?
Is that by, yes, special use?
Special use in the I-1?
If you look at Article A, where it's got the special uses, then the prohibited uses, I think you're referring to these, to take these, these out, these prohibited uses, the craft grower, the infuser.
Are you looking at like...
I'm confused.
Prohibited uses, this is for the Village Center District? You know, I'm not talking about the Village Center Article A or Article B.
No, I'm in, oh, yeah, I was under, I'm looking at Article A, where it says I-1, Light Industrial District.
Yes, right.
Yeah. So under here, saying, take these, take these out.
Correct.
Where it says, yeah, so where it says the prohibited use, where it says 10-7A-6, prohibited use.
Right.
Reference the upper-left corner. That gives you the page, example, page three of three, or three of four.
I don't see the page number.
There's no page number. I don't know what to look at.
So I think what Joe is saying...
Like the third page from the back of the packet.
It's 10-7A-6, prohibited uses. That's for the I-1 Light Industrial District.
The third sheet from the back.
Third sheet from the back of the packet.
I got it right here.
So he's removing the uses from the prohibited uses in the I-1 and the I-2 EDA, and he's adding them to the I-2 and I-1, I-2 EDA special uses?
Yes.
Okay. That is, are you making a motion?
I'll make a motion to pass that.
Just to clarify.
Yes.
Are we, are we removing those completely, or are we removing those?
Moving them from prohibited uses to the special uses.
Only in the industrial district?
Only in the industrial parks.
Only in the I-1 and I-2.
And they'll be prohibited.
So specifically to the industrial park?
Specifically to the industrial park.
Railroad break terminals, but that's specific to there?
Yeah. Those, specifically to those two areas in there.
Okay.
Saying if it's any of these uses.
Okay.
With distancing requirements?
Well, the distancing requirement is always specified by the fact that it's in the Light Industrial District, correct?
No, no, that is not, no. There's distancing requirements for cultivation and for dispensing, from distances from residential zone properties and schools, daycare centers, those sorts of things.
For the time being, I would make them the same, rather than, I don't want to, you know, open it 100%, you know, I don't want to open the floodgates.
Distancing requirements?
Similar distance requirements to the other uses.
Okay, probably the 1,000 feet, that's dispensing cultivation.
Yeah, the 1,000 feet.
It's 2,500, okay. And limitation on number?
Number of, yeah, I, as long as it's limited to those specific areas, I would not limit the numbers.
So what was, when the board addressed this before, and you briefly touched on it before, what was their objection to the craft growers and the transportation?
I don't think they got into a discussion of the, each of those specific businesses. I think that the, the policy idea is to, like you guys are touching on, is this thing has to be addressed, and let's do it in a conservative way. You can always go back and, and allow more in the future. But for now, I think that the, the approach is to be as conservative as possible. There's a lot of unknowns. You kind of know what you have. You know what a cultivation operation looks like. You know what a dispensing operation looks like. But a transport operation, who knows, you know, exactly what that looks like and what, what comes with those kinds of businesses. Infusing, where you're doing processing, there, there's a lot of, of unknown with that, too. And I think, simply put, the board was looking to mirror what was currently in our code, which was medical dispensaries and medical cultivation. It was just simpler for them to mirror that current language. And I think that's what they were intending to do.
That would make sense.
Does the, the state ordinance or the state statute give guidance or requirements for craft growers or transportation?
All of those businesses have to be licensed with the state.
So there must be...
And there are requirements, yes. There's a, there's a lot of security requirements, obviously, with all of those businesses. Because the, the big concern with any of those is burglary. There's going to be a lot of products stored on-site, illegal sales, and that sort of thing. So the state has inventory control requirements and licensing process for those.
That makes sense.
I mean, I see both ways. I see what Joe's saying, but the complexity changes with those by adding, I mean, the, you could fit it into the, the footprint that exists for the medical, which, you know, was their thought. Why do we try and, for those operations, to put a, the proverbial square peg into the round hole without really needing to have much more detail because of the, the difference in operations?
How practical would it be for us to have like a two-year sunset clause, where this would come up for review in two years or something?
That might be difficult, only because even though the law goes into effect January 1st of 2020, we're, the, the Village of Bartlett's not even going to be in the first round because we currently have no medical dispensaries or medical cultivations. And those communities that have those currently are part of the first, what is it, 55 licenses that get issued? So we, we, it, it could be some time before we're allowed to even have this opportunity to open one of these. So two years might be too short, I guess, is what I'm saying.
Well, he's got a motion, if we're going to do that.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor.
Will, will you please restate the motion very specifically?
All right. I guess the motion is to move the prohibited uses of the cannabis from the prohibited uses, move them to the special uses, so that they are now allowed in the, only in the I-1 and I-2 areas. And for, distance-wise, I think 1,000 feet was mentioned, so I would go with that. Move to do those two things.
For craft growers, transportation, and cannabis infusion?
Yes.
And are the other items have a limit of two per area?
The, the dispensing and the cultivation, it's a limit of two each, village-wide, a limit of one in Blue Heron and one in Brewster Creek.
So should we be consistent?
Let's see, I would probably, no, two sounds pretty restrictive. Even for those two small areas, I would move it to like 10. Rather than, you know, unlimited, you know, make it a number like 10, I think that would be more reasonable.
Is there even room for 10?
Maybe not. I don't know.
I, I don't know. We'd have to look, look into that, but you could make that motion.
Put 10 in the motion.
Suggesting a total of 10 of these additional businesses. The additional ones. Not the dispensing and cultivation. Those would remain at two?
Beg your pardon? No.
The cultivation and the dispensaries are currently at two each. Would you leave those at two each?
No.
And the other ones at 10?
I mean, overall, I would make it 10.
10 for all?
Yes.
Okay.
So with this motion, we're increasing the dispensaries?
That's what the motion is.
To 10? And then, I just have one other question. Are these changes from prohibited to special, are they consistent with the state statute that is going to be implemented in January? Are there any inconsistencies that are going to conflict with, with the state law, the state statute on it? See what I'm saying? So if we change this, I mean, are we consistent with the state statute?
This is our local.
It's special, okay.
10 just seems kind of high.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know if I want to increase the dispensaries to 10.
What about 5?
I'm fine with it. I mean, I don't want to argue about, you know.
Do we want to keep it at 2?
That sounds pretty restrictive to me.
So what's, what's the consensus? We want to try to get a decent vote out of this.
Looking for a consensus, I'm still in agreement with the way the document is drawn up. I think it should be restricted.
I agree.
I'm in agreement with George.
I like the restrictions.
We have a motion. We don't have a second yet, but...
That's why I was asking that this be restated and restated very carefully.
Or amend the motion.
Because it's very important.
There's a second.
Is there a second on the motion or no?
I don't want to have a vague and ambiguous motion here.
Is there a second? Is the, is the motion currently 10, or are we changing the number? There's no second. I don't think there is.
Change it to 5.
Okay, 5.
Is there a second?
I mean, the more I think of it, the, we're making this whole issue that much more complex, I think. I would go for, as it is written, and we've got something on the books come January 1st, that doesn't mean we can't add, once we learn more, once we see what the demands are, what, you know, do we have businesses coming to us and asking about a transportation operation? We can always, down the road, add craft growers if, if there seems to be something that warrants us doing that, rather than kind of jumping in with both feet now, kind of wade in, get an idea of what's going to happen.
We don't have a second.
Okay, so I think that motion died. Okay. Is there a new motion?
I'll make a motion to pass Item 5, 1913, adult-use cannabis, as is with the current language.
Second?
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor, by Guy, seconded by Charlie, basically as presented to us tonight. Any discussion on that?
I think it's a good start. Might not be where we end up three years from now, but...
Well, and the thing is, to make changes, they're going to have to come back through us again anyway.
Correct.
Whether they restrict it or liberalize it. So we still have a say in it. Okay, any further discussion? Let's call the roll.
Boba Carl?
Yes.
Guy Peppa?
Yes.
Michelle Sarwis?
Yes.
Charlie DeVault?
Yes.
Mike Wearden?
Yes.
George Cozio?
Yes.
Joe Bano?
Oh.
Okay, 6-1. So I presume this will be on the agenda before the end of the year?
19th, isn't it? It's, it's on the next board meeting.
Oh, it is?
Yeah. Can we, we can get these minutes done? Yeah.
Okay, it's on the next board meeting.
We don't have a lot of time.
You said the 19th is the next one?
Yeah.
Looks like it's anything under old business, new business?
It looks like we're going to have a meeting next month for the text amendment for fence heights that Kristi mentioned.
Okay.
So, yes, we have one item.
That'll be a quickie.
And then, you know, the holiday party, too, that you're all invited to. You'll get invitations the next few weeks. It's on Friday, the 13th.
The second Friday.
Yes. December 13th. And it's at Bartlett Hills.
The 13th?
Yes. And then, I hate to say it, but tonight is probably Diane's last meeting. She is moving over to the police department.
Really?
Yes. And that's why we have Kim here tonight. Kim is going to be taking her place, and she picked a great meeting to come to. So we're sad to see Diane leave, but we're happy for her. So she just needs to get these minutes done.
It's Kim's baby.
Welcome aboard, Kim. Diane, we're sorry to see you leave.
Well, I was at the police department for eight years prior to coming here, so...
Now that they have a new building, you want to go back, right?
Yeah. They need me.
Wow. Another country heard from.
I have a question. What's, what's the status of the Buc-Ee's on 59? They're across from Dunkin' Donuts.
Oh, yeah, that was a big push to get that through.
Seemed to be quite some time ago.
Talk of a stoplight.
Are they still going through with it?
That is not going through.
It's not?
Mm-hmm.
Oh. They changed their mind.
Or did, or does the village board put the kibosh on that?
No. Buc-Ee's has withdrawn that, that application at that location.
Wow. So that means no stoplight, right?
That is correct.
At this point. Interesting. Anything else? Any motions to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
Michelle, any seconds?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. See everybody next month.
8:20.
Wow.